The regular meeting of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury to order. We ask that you please silence your cell phone. And if there's anything on the agenda that you'd like to speak on, we ask that you please fill out a blue slip and on the table at the rear end of the room and bring them to Ms. Jessica up front. We'll now have the invoke, let's see, the roll, let's see, the invocation and the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Burley.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet here tonight. We ask that you guide our decision-making process and that would be pleasing to you. Father, we just ask that you would put a calming hand on this world and that we will look for peaceful resolutions instead of war. Watch over our country and protect us and ask for peace in the Middle East. All this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abshire.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Mr. Barris is unable to attend. Mr. Burley?
Here.
Mr. Clement?
Here.
Ms. Eason?
Here.
Mr. Gillory?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Markantel is unable to attend. Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Stell.
Here.
President Partey.
Here.
Do you have a floor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. 1A will hold a public meeting at 5:45 PM. We will go to 2A, adopt a resolution approving an act of donation of a permanent public facility servitude agreement for the East Calhoun Parish Consolidated Water Works project. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any objection? Any discussion? Motion carries. 2B, adopt resolutions approving permanent public facility servitude agreements for the East Calhoun Parish Consolidated Water Works projects. We have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on 3A.
3A, adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated September 5, 2024.
We have a motion by Mr. Andropan and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 3B, approve the Personnel Policy Review Committee report dated October 3, 2024. Mr. Guillory.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Policy Review Committee of the police jury met today, October 3, at 5 PM, and received a report from staff on proposed revisions to the Human Resources policy manual. Highlights of the proposed changes and updates include added and updated policies which are governed by federal and state legislation, added employee benefits such as vision, critical illness, and accident insurance, and clarified employee section relative to job posting and promotions. The committee recommends that the police jury adopt a resolution approving the changes as presented on this date to be effective January 1, 2025. This is the end of my report, Mr. President, and I move to as recommended by the committee.
Sir.
We have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 3C, adopt the resolution approving the purchase of property located in the 900 block of Ryan Street, Lake Charles, for an amount not to exceed the appraised value of the property. We have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Andropan. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 3D, adopt a resolution providing notice of intention to abolish Community Center and Playground District Number 7 of Ward 2 and fixing the date of a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting of the police jury on November 7, 2024. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on 3E.
3E, adopt an ordinance approving an additional ad valorem tax exemption in the Parish of Calhoun Parish for a property receiving a homestead exemption and owned and occupied by a qualified first responder to be effective with the 2025 tax rule. We have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 4A, approve applications for liquor and beer permits. Staff recommends approval of one new and five renewal applications as well as ratification of one special event permit. We have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 4B, adopt an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 7951, which ordered demolition of one manufactured home with addition located at 2212 Green Lawn Street in Lake Charles. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Abshire. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 4C, adopt ordinance approving the sale of adjudicated property located at 1621 Ninth Street, Lake Charles to Mrs. Danette Freeman. Fennet, I'm sorry, no, Danette, Danette Freeman. We have a motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 5A, yes, sir.
Question.
So if someone maintained the property a year before the adjudicated property, they get to buy the property, they get to have it without bidding on it?
Well, actually, there's a longer period of time, Mr. Guillory, but as long as they've been doing it, and we have documentation that they have been doing that, then they can proceed with this procedure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. 5A, adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for design services for the White Oak Park Boat Launch and Improvement Project. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 5B, adopt a resolution approving a professional engineering contract for design services for the Riverside Park Boat Launch and Improvements Project. We have a motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Clement. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 6A, adopt a resolution approving the submittal of a funding application to the Federal Transit Administration for operation and capital assistance for the provision of transportation services to rural citizens. We have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 7A, approve the payment of all current invoices. We have a motion by everybody, huh? We have a motion by Mr. Andropan and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 7B, action on bids for hot mix. Staff recommends the low bid of RE Height Construction Company be accepted. We have a motion by Ms. Eason and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 7C, action on bids for water level monitoring station parts. Staff recommends the bid of Blue Water Design Technologies, Campbell Scientific, Kisters North America, and Ott Hydromet Corp. be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Guillory and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 7D, advertise for requests for proposals for aerial imagery and light detection and ranging services.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Ms. Eason.
So where would we do the aerial imagery and light detection? What is, can you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. This is the agreements or contracts that will be used to continue to fly your aerial photography that's used on your GIS systems, which is parish-wide, the boundaries of parish. And LiDAR is a special set of imagery data that we use. It really gives you the contours and the elevations of the land. That'll also be parish-wide. That'll, so your aerial photography is ever two years. The LiDAR, we anticipate running that really only about every 10 years.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8A, Calhoun Parish Planning and Zowing Board.
To reappoint.
We have to reappoint Mr. Keith Dubrock, Mr. Jake Pochet, and Mr. Carl H. Vinson. We have a motion to reappoint all three by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8B, Community Center and Playground District Number 7 of Ward 2. A motion to defer for 60 days. The motion is by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8C.
Move to appoint Mr. Josh Foster.
Consolidated Gravity Drainage District Number 1. It's a motion to appoint Mr. Josh Foster. Motion by Mr. Andropan and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8D.
Motion to defer.
Ward 1 Fire Protection District Number 1. We have a motion to defer for 30 days.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion?
Is Mr. Quinn?
I'm sorry.
Quinn.
Oh, the motion by Mr. Quinn and a second by Mr. Smith.
We're so close, we look alike.
The next time, y'all just wear different clothes. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8E.
Move to approve.
Ward 4 or 5 Contesting District Number 1. It's a motion to reappoint Mr. Jamar Como and Mr. Darren Broussard. Motion by Mr. Burley and a second by Mr. Quinn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8F, Ward 8 Fire Protection District Number 2. A motion to reappoint Mr. Charles Manuel, Mr. Keith Begno, and Mr. John Dennison Jr. A motion by Mr. Stelly and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8G, Water Works District Number 7 of Wards 4 and 6. We have a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. Andropan and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8H, Vinton Harbor and Terminal District.
Move to appoint Mr. Jerry Merchant.
We have a motion to appoint Mr. Jerry Merchant.
Submit the names.
Oh, pardon me.
And Mr. Kent Ledoux.
Okay. And, and Mr. Kent Ledoux.
So we have a motion to appoint Mr. Jerry Merchant and Mr. Kent Ledoux by Mr. Andropan. We have a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Yes, sir.
I think, I think it's just submit, it's not a point.
Submit the names, both of them.
I can explain that for you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
The law requires this police jury to submit the names of two people and the town of Vinton to submit the name of two people, and that board will appoint one from those four. So that's what we do. We are submitting two names.
Okay. So we have a motion to submit two names. The names are Mr. Jerry Merchant and Mr. Kent Ledoux. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 8I, West Calhoun Parish Court, Harbor and Terminal District. There's a motion to appoint, to reappoint Mr. Buddy Ream. A motion by Mr. Andropan and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Oh, the second was by Mr. Clements.
They look alike, too.
Okay, all right. Any, any other discussion? Motion carries. 8J, Workforce Development Board.
Defer for 30 days on bullet number 1 and to reappoint, to appoint Angela Quinna on bullet 2.
Okay, we have a motion to defer the appointment on, on 1 and a motion to appoint Ms. Angela Quinna. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Now we'll go back up to the public hearing. 1A, hold a public hearing at 5:45 and serve as board of review to hear protest on current tax assessments and take appropriate action thereon. Mr. Gabb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Each year about this time, this police jury serves as the board of review for tax assessment appeals, property owners challenging the assessed values of their properties. Ms. Aguilar has the assessor. By law, is the advisor to you on these matters. Tonight, we only have one appeal. It's a kind of a repeat customer, and Ms. Aguilar will give you that appeal right now.
Jessica's helping and passing out. A brief summary, I didn't, we've stopped giving you guys all the thick paper. I give her one administrative copy that she can have for her files and give you guys a, a smaller condensed version. So as, as Mr. Gabb said, once a year, you will serve as the board of review for any assessment appeals to my office. This year, we only have one, and I do believe that Mr. Cisneros is here. It's Phillips 66. It is a return appeal that we've had previously, and so I think Mr. Cisneros would like to make his presentation.
Please state your name and, please state your name and business address for the record, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the police jury. My name is Chris Cisneros. I work for Phillips 66 Company. I'm the property tax director. My business address is 2331 City West Drive, Houston, Texas, 77042.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like Ms. Aguilar said, I represent Phillips 66, and we are a repeat customer. And I'm here because I respectfully disagree with the, with the fair market value that has been applied to account number or assessment number 00191930, which is our Lake Charles refinery. I believe the appropriate fair market value for this property is $497 million, and there's a few reasons why I think that, but let me give you a little bit of background. Our refineries can process approximately 264,000 barrels per day out of the entire Phillips 66 fleet of refineries. This is the, this is the least capable of producing clean fuels. In my handout, I attached some printouts from our 10K, and you can cleanly see that it's a seven, it's, it's not, it's not the highest of clean fuels, and that's your, your gasoline, that's your ultra-low sulfur diesel, that's your clean jet fuel, that's your clean bunker fuels, those things that are mandated in part by the government and part by our customers. The refinery is in operation. It's still, still there, and obviously on I-10, we're undergoing a turnaround right now, so if you see a lot of cranes out there, that's what they're doing. Some of the things that are a challenge for the refining, our refinery and refining in general, there's a few of them. Number one, I've included some information about electric vehicles. When we, when we're talking about the value of the refinery, we got to put ourselves in the shoes of a potential buyer. What would a potential buyer say? I'm going to buy this refinery from you. This is what I want, this is what I'm willing to pay you. And one of the things a potential buyer would look at is like, what's the demand for the product? What's the demand for the product going to be over a period of several years? Not tomorrow, not January the 2nd, but over a period of several years? And what's the future look like? And we know now that there's quite a, quite a bit of growing, growing use of electric vehicles in our, in our country, and, and that's one of the things that has a potential to impact the use of gasoline in the future. That's one of the products we make at our refinery, and anybody that drives, drives around Houston, believe it or not, oil and with, which is a heavy oil and gas presence, you'd be surprised at the number of electric vehicles driving on the road in Houston, but that's not just true of Houston, it's true of a lot of places. We can see that all over. The second thing is clean fuels. We have, this refinery is, has, now has been producing clean diesel, which we call ULSD, that's ultra-low sulfur diesel. I've always brought that up in the past, that we don't have the units or the capability of producing that, but through, through rearranging some of the piping and also running some of the equipment in a little bit different configuration, which is additional maintenance and capital cost for us, we are currently making ULSD. But that's a requirement by the federal government. That's something that a long-term, you know, long-term, we're going to have to come up with a long-term solution to be able to produce ULSD in a competitive market. You know, we're not the only refinery out there, we're not the only refinery in the parish, and in Louisiana, we're not the only refinery. So that's something I also believe a purchaser would be looking at into the future. You know, can these guys make, can this refinery make the prod, the, the product that's in demand in the market and required by the federal government, the ULSD? So in the past, I've estimated, you know, it's between maybe $150 to $200 million to install a ULSD unit out there. The number can fluctuate, of course, depending on the times, but that's, you know, just to give you an idea about the, the scale of the money we would have to spend to bring this refinery up to current, to current capabilities of a lot of our competitors out there. One of the other things is, is our refinery, if you've seen, obviously, you've seen it next to Interstate 10 and not too far from the bridge. It's an old refinery. It was originally built in the 1940s, but of course, we've gone through a series of upgrades and improvements, but if you look at an overhead, you can see that it's in a pretty compact space. We're in a tight footprint. We don't have a lot of ability to grow. We don't even have a lot of ability to maneuver around and do a lot of the maintenance that we need to do. So anything that we, any type of expansion we would need to put in new units or even get those units started or do maintenance is something that's going to likely take more room, and when you have a limited amount of room to work in, you, number one, add a time, and number two, you add expense. So we're really challenged in that area with our footprint and our ability to grow. You know, we're surrounded by other companies, we're surrounded by other businesses, and you can imagine when you're the refiner and you come knocking on their door wanting to buy their property, they're going to want a lot of money for it. So that's a, that could be an expense for us, and I believe, again, a purchaser would look and say, what's, if I want in the future, expand this refinery, if in the future, I want to add these units, in the future, I want to grow here, I want to grow there, can I do it here? And the answer is, well, it would be very tough and very expensive to do. But I also want to point out that, as we know, they're, they're currently looking at building, rebuilding the bridge there in Lake Charles, and as it is right now, the state has, yes, sir.
Your five minutes is up.
Okay. Well, in conclusion, I want to thank the, thank the chairman and the jury for listening to me, but I do think the value's overstated. I think it's overvalued, it's overvalued in the appropriate fair market value, it's $497 million.
Sir, I appreciate your time. Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Cisneros?
If you would allow me, what were you saying about the bridge? How's that going to affect you?
Well, is, currently now, the plans are to move the, the quote "new" bridge farther to the north, which impedes in our property in a couple spots, but there's also a pipe rack that goes from our refinery to the dock, which where we ship out our, in part, we ship out some of our products from that dock. So we're going to have to rebuild that pipe rack and, and move, move all of our, our foundations for the pipe rack, and we're going to have to shut down some deliveries until that's all in place and we're working. We're going to have to work with the state, we're going to have to do a lot of design, and you know, that could be, they're estimating right now, that could be up to $100 million to do for us. So, you know, if you look at that, and I guess my point is, a purchaser would say, yeah, it's, you're going to have to buy, you could buy the, we could buy this refinery, but right off the bat, we're going to have to look at spending all this money to, to accommodate the state's expansion project. So that was, that was the point of the, the bridge.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, I'm going to beg you once again, because it's been a whole year. Please get with our delegation to where they change the law, to where this man doesn't have to come down here before us every year. I don't disagree with really almost anything that you said, you know, but it's not our decision. This is going to go to the state tax commission. He drove five hours, by the time he drove over here and go back, that's five hours of driving. He drove five hours last year, and regardless of what we did, it makes no difference what our decision is, because the state's the one that makes the decision. This is insane. Please call them and see if they'll change, change the way that this is done.
Yes.
That way, because he's going to give the same spiel to the state whenever, you know?
I can address that for you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept their recommendation.
I'll address that for you, Mr. Landry. I, I have been on a committee that was put in place to study whether or not we could eliminate the police juries and parish councils from being the board of review. I worked with Representative Boriak along with the police jury administrator, I believe, Debbie Hudnall. Is that Debbie?
Debbie Hitten, is that?
Debbie Hitten, I'm sorry. Yes, so I've been working with them on the possibility of that. Unfortunately, the board of review process and the police jury serving as the board of review is in the Constitution. It would take a constitutional amendment to take you out of this process.
Put it on the ballot.
I'm not saying that that couldn't happen. I'm not saying that that couldn't happen. We have revised some rules that we would like to see put into legislation that would help this process and timing and so forth. It would not take you guys out of the process, but Debbie does have all of that information. We have submitted it to Rep. Boriak, if possibly, to make this process a little bit easier for you guys as far as timeframe. Now, if you guys would like to sponsor a bill to take it out of the, the Constitution and put forth a constitutional amendment, that is obviously in your purview, you can do that, but right now, that's what it would take to take you out of the process.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As far as Phillips 66, what I can tell you is this is an existing, there are two previous years of appeals. What Mr. Cisneros explained to you is his interpretation of valuation for this facility. What we have is, it's real important that I explain to you kind of how this process works. With business assets, manufacturing, so forth... With business assets, manufacturing, so forth, we send out LAT forms, L-A-T forms, if you have a business. I know Mr. Landry's familiar with them. The green and white form that we send out to everyone every year. Because this type of property is reassessed every year. Unlike real estate and buildings, which are reassessed every four years, business assets are reassessed annually. So if there's something that happens, say, with the bridge, and we need to do something in the future, when the timing comes up with moving pipes and so forth, we can do that in an annual valuation, because this kind of property gets reassessed annually. So that's real important to know. The other part is that this is information that is submitted... This valuation for this property is submitted by the taxpayer. We're a self-reporting state. That's why you get the green and white form. And those property owners submit those assets to us. So this valuation is based on the assets that were submitted by the property owner. Okay? So this is everything that Phillips has turned into us creates this valuation. And that's where we are with the valuation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions from Ms. Aguilar?
I would ask that you uphold my value and let this move forward.
We have a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Gwynn. Any discussion?
I got one.
You have questions, Mr. Clinton?
Yes, one question. I mean, Sitco is evaluated the same exact way, correct?
Sure.
And they have no problem with it?
I'm sorry, they have no...
Well, I mean, I'm sure nobody likes taxes.
No, I do not have an appeal from Sitco, no, sir.
It's a consistent process.
Yes, sir. As a self-reporting state, yes, sir, it is a consistent process.
Right. So, thank you.
I'm good.
Let me have the discussion.
Mr. Lewis got something.
Any other discussion?
Come on, Mr. Lewis, come on, just be it.
Calling you out, brother.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you.
Number nine is an advise item.
Move to go into executive session.
10A, consideration of going into executive session to discuss Water Works District Number 8 of Ward 3 and 8 v. Mitchell Huff Power. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Cisneros. Any discussion? Any objection? Let's do it.
Are you still talking?
Well, he's got...